Vice Mayor Ron Washington has our prayer and pledge this evening. Mr. Washington.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers of the public. Will you please join me with, join us for a moment of silence? Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, June 6, 2013. I'd like to welcome our members of the public who are here, our business owners, and our staff who are here as we continue to go through our budget deliberations. And also, we have several public hearings tonight that we'll go through and quite an extensive consent agenda. So without further ado, I'd like to present the consent agenda to our council members, see if there are any questions regarding the consent agenda. And if there are not, would there be a motion to pass the consent agenda as it has been presented?
Sumoed.
Second. Have a motion and second on the consent agenda. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
At this time, we'll consider again for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Memorial Boulevard to Highway Commercial CH District.
Move for passage on third reading.
Second. Motion and second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
At this time, we'll consider again for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Salem Highway at Kason Lane to Highway Commercial CH District and General Office OG District.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to amend an area located in Winslow Park PRD.
Sumoed. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
At this time, we'll consider again for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to annex an area at 841 Osborne Lane and adopt for the same a plan of services.
Move for passage on third and final reading.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance amending Chapter 33, Water and Sewers, Section 33-1 of the Murfreesboro City Code dealing with minimum monthly water charges and minimum monthly sewer charges.
Move for passage on third reading.
Second. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
At this time, we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance amending Chapter 32 Traffic, Section 32-2101 regarding parking violation penalties. Mr. Crumley.
Mayor, this ordinance runs in conjunction with your proposed budget, increasing parking fines in and around the square in downtown Murfreesboro. During the Citizens Academy, we learned that the $2 ticket, 100% of that money was going to the state of Tennessee for various judicial training functions. The cost of the city employees who police the area around the square is roughly $120,000. We met with the Main Street Organization, met with the Downtown Business Association. They helped us formulate this proposal that's in front of you tonight, which cuts that cost to the city as a whole in about half. This should raise about $60,000.
All right. Any questions of Mr. Crumley regarding this ordinance?
Mayor.
Yes.
May I be?
Ms. McKinnon.
Thank you. I would ask the council to consider a change. The next-to-last whereas is inconsistent with the Section 1 and, in fact, the law where it says that the cost currently is within two days. It's actually within 10. So I've given a substitute original to Ms. Machado for his official copy of the ordinance. So you don't need to vote to amend it. I just wanted to call that out to you, that there was a substitution and correction of that mistake.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions regarding this?
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Young.
I'm, I serve on the Main Street Board, and this was, has been discussed for several months by them and the Downtown Business Association, so it's not a surprise. And they helped forge the part of this document with their, with their help. So it's not going to be a surprise to the merchants downtown, and they basically approved it.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Or they have approved it.
Any other questions, comments? All right, then you have this ordinance on first reading. Is there a motion?
With consideration of Mr. Young's comments and the corrections from Ms. McKinnon, I'd move for passage.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Well, I apologize to the council. I was trying to silence my cellphone, and instead I made it make noise. So for those of you who have cellphones and don't want to be embarrassed like the mayor was embarrassed, you might silence yours. And if I hear a noise in the next two minutes, then it's okay, but let's silence our cellphones. How about that? My apologies. At this time, pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on May the 9th, 2013, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 6.68 acres from single-family residential 15, RS 15 District, to Highway Commercial District located at 2315 Joby Jackson Parkway. Ms. Linda Sneed is, on behalf of Stones River Church, is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the May 19th, 2013 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Ealy, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, councilmembers. First public hearing that the Planning Commission's recommend, sending a recommendation to you for is for property located along the north side of Joby Jackson Parkway. This property is currently developed with the Stones River Church, and the church is currently exploring opportunities to use the, some of their facility in different manners. For example, they're considering using a part of their facility for childcare or possibly for restaurant, and these two uses would not be accessory to the principal use. Therefore, they wouldn't be permitted under the current zoning, which is RS 15, which is single-family residential district. Churches or public assemblies are permitted by special use permit granted from the Board of Zoning Appeals. The Board of Zoning Appeals also does not have the authority to permit a restaurant or childcare facility that is not accessory to the church use in this area. So the application to you this evening is to consider changing the zoning from RS 15 to CH. You can see from the map that the property is located adjacent to some property zone CH. It's also located adjacent to some property zone PRD, Planned Residential District. And when this church was developed, there was very little development in this area. Actually, the church was constructed prior to the residential district to the west and to the zoning being in place to the east. The church has an applicant, the church has sent a representative here this evening, Ms. Linda Sneed, and she would like to say a few words before you do conduct your public hearing. If you have any questions regarding this application, either myself or Ms. Sneed will be glad to answer them. And I'll go ahead and introduce Ms. Sneed to the electorate this time and let you know that the Planning Commission's recommendation is that you approve this. That recommendation was unanimous the night of their meeting, and all seven members were present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Linda Sneed. I'm the Executive Director of Stones River Church, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have on the rezoning. We are looking to make some additional uses for our church facility in hopes of raising additional funds to help with the life of the church. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any questions for staff from the council before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning approximately 6.68 acres from single-family residential to highway commercial, please step to the microphone. Is anyone here wishing to speak? Anyone at all? Last chance. I'll close the public hearing at this time. We'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone an area located 2315 Joby Jackson Parkway.
Move for passage on first reading.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
At this time, pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council again on May the 9th, 2013, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately .7 acres located along East Main Street from residential multifamily 12, RM 12 District, to Highway Commercial District. Special Kids Incorporated is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the May 19th, 2013 issue of the local newspaper. Please continue.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Our second public hearing is to consider changing the zone for property located south of East Main Street and east of Arnett Street from its current RM 12 District Zone, which is multifamily residential district, to CH Commercial Highway District. The property is currently developed with one single-family house and is located in an area with several different zoning types. Across Arnett Street to the west is Special Kids, which is a nonprofit organization that provides some need, some services to special needs children, and that property is zone CH. And the reason this application is being made for you is because they now have a contract to purchase the property, which is being studied for rezoning tonight. They want to expand their operations and provide service for more needy families, and as such, they are acquiring this adjacent property. As a side note, you will, in the future, be reviewing an application to change the zoning for the property that is directly or contiguous to the east of this property. So they now have a application for both properties. However, the Planning Commission has not had a public hearing yet on that second project, but I did want you to know that their plans are to buy both these properties, demolish the houses, and they construct a facility that would support the type of uses and services they provide. And that's something that I think we're proud of in our community, and I know that as a city, we support this organization. And as a use, Planning Commission did consider the use in this area and believes that it would be a low-impact use and a positive to our community. The properties to the north are zone multifamily, various RM 12 or RM 16. Property to the south is zone PCD, Planned Commercial District. So it's adjacent to property that's not used residentially but is used for commercial purpose. And the property, of course, to the east, it will be the application of a future rezoning, which is currently zone RM 12, but they'll come to you and ask for CH. Mr. Matt Taylor is representing the applicants. He does not have a presentation prepared, but he'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have about this application or about the proposed use. Otherwise, you should conduct a public hearing prior to making your decision. The Planning Commission, all seven members, did unanimously recommend that you approve this zoning change.
All right. Any questions from Ms. Ealy before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request on Main Street, please step to the microphone and give us your name and address. Anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Anyone? Last chance. I'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance rezoning an area located along East Main Street to Highway Commercial CH District.
Mayor, I wanted to make a comment that I, I don't, it's not a conflict of interest, but I did serve on the Special Kids Board, so I just wanted to say that before I made the motion to approve for this very worthwhile organization.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McFarland. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Thank you, Mr. Young. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
At this time, pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on May the 9th, 2013, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 2.92 acres from Commercial Fringe CF District to Highway Commercial CH District. Rezone approximately 20.98 acres from residential single-family 15, RS 15 District, to Highway Commercial CH District. Rezone approximately 14.8 acres from residential single-family 15, RS 15 District, to residential zero lot line, RZ District. And rezone approximately 50.9 acres in two tracks from residential single-family 15, RS 15 District, to residential multifamily 16, RM 16 District, along Veterans Parkway and Franklin Highway, or Franklin Road, Highway 96. Swanson Developments LP is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the May 19th, 2013 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Ealy, please proceed.
Thank you, sir. Our final public hearing this evening is to consider zoning some property located along the south side of Highway 96 or Franklin Road, Old Fork Parkway, and located along the eastern side of Veterans Parkway and north of Moreland Lane from its various zoning districts to the districts which I'm about to describe, and the mayor did so well. You can see the illustration that you have in your program books is very colorful, and it represents this one parcel which, for which many, several different zoning district classifications are being requested. This property is a part of the property for which the city purchased a site for a future school site, and you can see that I've identified that location on the map for you as proposed school site. The city, of course, is in the process of acquiring that parcel of property so that it will no longer be a part of the Swanson's property but will be city-owned. The remainder of the properties owned by the Swanson are what are the subject of this public hearing. You can see that the properties that have the frontage along State Highway 96 and Veterans Parkway are being proposed to be zoned to CH. The portion that's yellow is currently zoned Commercial Fringe District, and the request is to change that to Commercial Highway District. You can see an area that's pink that is surrounding the yellow portion, has frontage along with Highway 96 and Veterans Parkway, is currently zoned RS 15, Single Family Residential District. The request is also to have that property zoned CH Highway Commercial District. The property that is north of Moreland Drive and is in the purple color is currently zoned RM 15, which is Single Family Residential District, and the request is to change that zone to Commercial Local District, which is a type of commercial zoning which is more restrictive than Commercial Highway District. And I think, and it, this location is further from the highway, so that would, is the request of the applicants. You can also see the two large areas shaded orange. They are both zoned Single Family Residential District, and the request is to change that zone to Multifamily Residential District with a density of 16 dwelling units per acre. And the remaining zoning district is the one in the center, which is the blue color, cyan, and that property, again, is zoned Single Family Residential District, and the request is to change that property to Zero Lot Line Residential District. There are some features on the property that will affect the future development of the property, and we do have a topographic map in the packet for you so you can see the property. You can see that the property that is being proposed to be Commercial Local District and Zero Lot Line District is in Murfrees, is affected with some steeper topography, especially for Murfreesboro. And you can see that a portion of the properties that are requesting to be zoned for apartments is located in the 100-year flood plain, although it appears that it's not in the flood zone, which will also restrict some of the future development. This property is included in our Black Men Community Land Use Study, and you can see from the map that you have that the Black Men Land Use Plan recommends at this area, which is in the southern portion of the map, and it runs along just north of Moreland Drive, has, is being projected to be developed with commercial purposes along Franklin Road and at the intersection of Veterans Parkway, which is consistent with the request. The plan also depicts the property to be used for high-density residential purposes on the eastern portion of the property, which is the location of the proposed school site. And the plan also proposes medium-density residential uses on the western portion of the track. The Planning Commission did consider this item and has recommended approval to you. Mr. Kevin Gunther is here this evening. He's representing the Swanson family, who are the applicants for this project, and before the public hearing, he, I believe before the public hearing, he has a presentation. He'd like to go over some details with you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, either before or after the public hearing. Mr. Gunther.
Thank you, Ms. Ealy. Good evening, Mayor Bragg, councilmembers. My pleasure to be here tonight. I will keep the presentation brief, but I do believe there's some key things that I would like to point out with our application, because we feel we have a very strong merit for this application. And in the packet that I handed out to you this evening, I highlighted some of those things, and would like to be able to call those up. Specifically, in the first page, there's three things I want to highlight with this presentation. One is infrastructure. The second is long-range plan, and our fit with the long-range plan. And the third is how we fit with the context of the surrounding land use. So in that first exhibit you see, we have infrastructure. We have two arterial roadways that are adjoining our site. One of them, the recently completed Veterans Parkway, that runs that north-south connector to 840. We have water. We have 30-inch water mains on the main roads, and we have a water tower across from Veterans Parkway. We also have collector roads now. Because of the school, because of some of the development that's occurred in the area, we now have collector roads going into the parcel, and we think that's very well-suited for the type of density that we're proposing. And we have sewer. We have large main trunks that have come into the site across from the creek, from Overall Creek, and also on Veterans Parkway. So one of the things I want to present to you tonight is that this infrastructure is very well-merited with this, the densities that we're proposing, because it's a good return on the investment. A good return, the investment that the city has made, and a good return on the investment that the community has made. If you look at the, the second exhibit that I've given you tonight, what we're showing is how the long-range plan, the Black Men Long Range Plan fits with what we're proposing. Now, the Long Range Plan shows medium-density residential at four to eight units per acre and high-density residential at eight to 16 units per acre, and then a commercial node upright at that intersection of the, of the main arterial connectors. To use some of the words right from the Long Range Plan and goals, one of the things we want to do is to reserve sufficient land in appropriate locations for residential and non-residential uses. These areas of new growth should be located where the necessary infrastructure is available or can be economically provided. We also, using words from the Long Range Plan, want to foster and encourage a balance of housing opportunities, a balance and mixture of housing opportunities, which are responsive to diverse market needs and preferences of the community. And we also, using the language of the Long Use Plan, want to provide for new commercial nodes which have good vehicular access and local residential and regional market areas and have minimal conflict or encroachment with residential land use areas. With that being said, I'd like to flip to, I'd like to flip to our third exhibit. If I can get this pulled up on the computer. Because I think this is the most telling part of the story. Okay, so how do we fit with that Long Range Plan? Number one, where's our density at? Our density, if you look at not just the rezoning that we're doing here, but if you look at the big picture of what Swanson Development has done and what they're committing to, the vision that they have worked with us as a team to create for this area, there is a large number of single-family homes on the other side of Overall Creek that are part of what Swanson Development is doing. There is also a multifamily project on the other side of that creek. And we think that this proposed rezoning fits very well with the big picture, with that plan. So in our density, if you take this overall area compared to the Black Men Land Use Plan, including what we're proposing for rezoning tonight, we would have an average density of six units per acre. Remember the Black-
What was the number?
Six units per acre.
Six.
Yes, sir. Remember, the Black Men Plan was saying range anywhere from four to eight for low-density, eight to 16 for high-density. So we, we think we've hit that target very reasonably. The other thing is, we are, what we're asking for tonight fits in that bigger picture because we're providing a diversity and mixture of housing. We're providing not only that single-family, we're providing the medium-density residential and the high-density residential that we feel is very warranted for the location and the infrastructure that we're showing you. And then, third, we provided that commercial node, and it's in a place that there's undeveloped land. It's in a place that allows for the type of large commercial anchor to come in that would make this a very viable commercial development. So we feel like, you know, infrastructure, we've hit the mark. We've got very good infrastructure. It's an investment you want to see return on Long Range Plan. We fit very much in the context of the Long Range Plan, and that also goes for the annexation and the growth boundaries that the city is seeing as a pattern in this area. Last, I want to talk about how this plan fits with the context of its surrounding. And specifically, I want to touch on the multifamily. One of the things that multifamily does is it creates the opportunity to create what I call more like a campus feeling. It allows you to create open space in the right areas. It allows you to create buffers between your adjoining land uses, and it allows you to create more of a campus than the single-family, which kind of sprawls out and doesn't have that opportunity. Second, and this is very important as it relates to those collector roads, the multifamily residential allows us to control the access points on those roads, giving us an opportunity to really connect at the right places and also help deal with any parking issues that may come from single-family. And we feel that the multifamily is, is better related to those collector roads in allowing for a controlled access point. The other thing about multifamily is this allows us a connection point with pedestrian connections. Allowing the multifamily to occur here lets people to walk to schools, lets people walk to the church that's proposed near the site, the commercial, and allows the community to actually walk to some of the locations that are with this type of mixture that we're proposing. And then also, multifamily allows us to cluster and to plan that development. It allows us to respond to things like the flood plain and the slopes. And I want to touch on briefly, what you see on your plan there, I've given you a number for maximum build-out on our parcels, and that's the, that's the six DUs per acre, the six density units per acre that I use for the overall Swanson Development area, was that maximum developed number. But in reality, there's something that, that I refer to that's really, it's, it's more of, what is the actual, you know, realistic development of that site? And given that we've got flood plain, given that we've got slopes, given that you're going to have to give up public right-of-ways and easements, I think that, you know, you're looking at more like a 75% number for that build-out on those particular sites. When we come in with our site plan, there's a very good chance those densities will have to adjust due to the terracing and the flood plain that we'll need to be sensitive to. And then last, I wanted to just touch briefly on, on schools. I mean, and I know that schools have been an issue in this area, and so I did want to mention that we looked into this and just did a snapshot. Now, the eight, this is the APA- Now, this is the APA, American Planning Association, study, and this is a national average, and it's just, as I said, a general snapshot. But their study showed that single-family developments typically have a 0.94 student ratio per home, and that multifamily apartments typically have a 0.3 student ratio per home. So yes, with multifamily, we're going to have, we know we're going to have more people, we know we have a higher density, but it's very likely that the student population, just using that snapshot that American Planning Association provides, is going to be a smaller population per housing unit than a single-family. So for all these reasons, we feel this is a very strong application. We thank you for your review of this information. Mr. Joe Swanson is here as well this evening. And I'd like to just add one more thing about that. One thing we have on this site, as I showed you on that big picture, the large area, we have a developer. We have a developer that's committed to the community. We have a developer that's committed to building quality. He's built some very quality projects. So what he's done with his team is he's put this vision before you, and it includes this rezoning that we have here tonight. I'm very encouraged and very proud to be working with this particular developer, because I think what he's going to do is fill out that vision in a very positive way. We hope you feel the same. I will be available for questions.
Any questions for Mr. Gunther? You're suggesting with the children, school age per unit, that you've got about 200, 300, 240? If you had 600 units at .3, that's 180, 60 units at one. There's another, so 240 students possibly at build-out with the units?
Yeah, if, using that American Planning Association number, you'd have .3 students per apartment.
And you had 60 at RZ, so I would assume those would be like single-family, so-
Those tend to range in between, those tend to range in between the .3 and the 1.
So 200 students, and you're going to be next door to a 1,000-seat student population school?
That is correct. I mean, looking at the full build-out, you know, we obviously would have, you know, some-
And not all of those students would be in K through 6th grade, but-
Very correct. And that number that I gave you is a K through 12 number that accommodates all levels, elementary, middle school, and high school.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Gunther before I open the public hearing? Thank you for your presentation. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please step to the microphone and give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Jeff Rainwater. I live at 1030 Brinkston Run, and I would like to come out against this rezoning, or actually just part of this rezoning. Have no problem with commercials, zero lot line. What I do want to talk about tonight is the RM16, the actually apartment part of this rezoning. And the first thing I want to bring up is, there's been a, what I refer to basically as a flood of apartments coming into the Blackman area, and the request over the last couple of months, really. And we've, basically since the beginning of this year, we've had one major apartment complex open up, and three rezonings come before this body now in the last couple of months. And one permit issued for actual building of an apartment complex was issued in April. So all that together, you're looking at, what I estimate based on, and I actually use 75%, just like this gentleman does, for build-out on these properties, because we know there's no way to build out 100%. Is, you're looking at about 1,400-plus units will come online this year and next year, along with, and currently, you had about, before the beginning of this year, about 840 units in the Blackman community. So you're looking at about 174% increase in apartments in a very small area of town, especially in an area where the schools are really overcrowded to begin with. So we had a real problem there. So there's these two, there's also one on Manson Pike, just across the creek. There's the other one that's being built right now, to let you know kind of where those are. The other thing is, the Blackman Use Study really talks about, and if you look at it and you look at where the high densities are on there, the apartment complex, there's five places on there that are, that are proposed really for high-density. And they're spread out fairly well along the major roads, a few, a couple on the north, a few on the south. This actually clusters the apartments in two different places, once everything's said and done. But what we really need to look at is, when you look south of 840 in the Blackman Land Use Study, there are five areas slated for high-density, only five. When you look at that, and I sent on you a high-resolution colored copy of it, so you can see a little better, the black and white's a little hard to decipher. When you look at it, it has, there's five, and when you think about what we already have, we have Integra Creek, we have Bell Murphysboro, we have Cross Creek, we have Stone Ridge, and we also have the 180-unit one that was issued, permit issued in April. So we're sitting at five before we even look at these two, and then you've got one that's still on the table from your last public hearing for an apartment complex in this area. So right now is, you're basically going to more than double the apartment complexes than what you actually originally had in the Blackman Land Use Study when you look at this area. So the, not to mention the fact that within half a mile of the Blackman Land Use Study, you've got another 500 or 600 units when you look at Casey Lane, and also one on, over near Sam's, in that area. So when we look at the Blackman Land Use Study, the only other place there would be where they're really allowed for high-density was the mixed-use stuff along the 840 corridor. So realistically, these were supposed to be spread out throughout, and only south of 840, you know, the five, so I won't go that a little more. What I really want to talk about is the impact on schools, and this is one that's really, really difficult to deal with when you look at the schools, as far as the county dealing with building high schools and junior highs and splitting that with the city for the elementary schools, is when you look at the overcrowding situation you have right now, and the problem with high-density is they come onboard really fast, so you don't really have time to react to them. Right now, if we take Barfield Scales, Blackman, Casey Lane, all the schools in the general area, and you look at how many students they had, and I had the numbers from a rezoning meetings from earlier in the year, when you look at those schools, and you look at their capacities, look at how many students they have right now, and you think that the new school will alleviate that, and we're just looking at elementary school students, if you set them all at 90%, the new school would open with 895 students, if you just redid the mix you have right now in those schools of the students you have. So you'd be at 90% capacity when you opened the door. No, it's not going to play out that way, but you're not, you're still going to have an issue if you continue to stack apartments on top of apartments on top of apartments. Not to mention that, you know, this area was, if you look at the Land Use Study, was mainly medium-density. It was designed for a lot of houses, zero lot lines, those type things that are much lower in density. And, you know, people move into these areas, you know, the vast majority of them buy houses, they pay taxes. One thing you don't get with apartments is you don't get quite the tax rates you need to really bond those schools. Average house out there, you're looking, probably pays county taxes 15 to $1,800. You know, you're selling a $250, $300,000 house. I pull the tax records on Bell Murphysboro and Cross Creek, and you're looking at about a little over $1,000 a unit, and that's counting pools and all those things that other people pay through their homeowner association. So what you wind up with, if you overload too quickly with too many high-density apartments, you're causing a tax issue also. The growth needs to be consistent, and also the growth needs to be of all types at the rate it's going, not overload with a bunch of apartments to where you're not going to be able to do that without doing tax increases. And as we know right now, the county is asking for 3.8% or 3% this year again, anyway. I know that's not you guys, but your approvals can actually influence what happens at that other body. And unfortunately, the only way for us to really issue that is say, hey, you know, please, you know, slow down a little bit. Don't have any problem. I mean, I live right next to some apartments. I expect to live next to some apartments. I just don't expect to be overrun and go from 800 in the area, and the Blackman Land Use Study would probably allow for, you know, 1,000, 1,200, to dump another 1,400 on top of us, you know, quickly. I think that's a little too fast, and I also don't want to see these schools stay in a constant state of overcrowding. Because, yes, there's new elementary school, what they didn't even touch is Blackman Middle School and Blackman High School. I don't, I think this is actually Rockefeller Middle School, but Blackman High School services this area. Blackman High School is very overcrowded. So every one you add there is just an issue. Not to mention the fact that you have a lot of lots that are already approved in Blackman, in the Blackman area, that they can just go get a permit and build a house on. It's already passed, already been approved, the zoning's in place, they may have to get a plat approved or something, but you've got several hundred lots in neighborhoods there that's, will be built out, and are starting to really be built out now, as we look at some of the stuff, especially some of the rest of stuff near Berkshire and in the fucking station neighborhood and some of those type areas. So I would ask you that we, since the Blackman Land Use Study says we need to look at infrastructure, we do, and schools are infrastructure. There's no other way to really look at them, because they are part of the infrastructure of the community. I would recommend that you table this one like you did the last one, pending the outcome of Mr. Ray Lott's study into what the impact of the schools, both city and county, are, to make an actual informed decision instead of kind of going into it blind. I can tell you that .3 number is the one I used through all my, the information I've provided you, that's about right from what we see, knowing that when I run the numbers on Bell Murphysboro, and I know that there's 31 students there when we went through the rezoning issue with the schools. So those numbers work out pretty good. Houses, I would expect more, but also, I think, you're not going to put as many houses in an area, so you're going to get a lot more density and a lot more students from an apartment. So that's all I have for you tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Shane Hunter. I reside at 4552 Catalina Court in the Blackman area. I'd like to just echo the statements that Mr. Rainwater stated up here to you just a few minutes ago. We're just, we don't want to become overrun with apartments out there. I'd like to see more homes being built than apartment complexes or condominiums. I just think the area is growing too fast for the schools to be able to support that much growth. Think about where you all live. You probably wouldn't want a bunch of apartments on top of you either. There's a community right down I-24, before you get to Nashville, overrun with apartments. That used to be one of the best areas in the 1980s. That's where I went and hung out as a kid, at Hickory Hall Mall. You know, they started building all those apartments in there, and the neighborhood has went south ever since. I don't want to see that happen to Blackman or to Murphysboro. Appreciate your time with this issue and looking that over. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak for or against?
Good evening, Mayor Bragg, council staff, department heads, tonight. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. I'm speaking in support of this project, obviously.
And my name is?
Joe Swanson, Jr. Sorry, 1188 Park Avenue. You know, it takes a lot of sharp minds to put together a project like this. This is not something that we just came up with overnight. We looked at the whole area. If I can go back 10 or 12 years, when Victory Station came online, you know, the Swanson family, we feel stepped out. We tried to do a quality project, and still believe that the potential is there. We raised the bar out there, and there's still some dirt sitting out there, but there were some opportunities that we had at that time during the last 10 or 12 years that we just didn't really feel like it felt. It didn't feel like that was the type of product that we wanted on that property, so we passed on it. Another thing that I would like to mention is that there are a lot of options out there to consider when we look at this large tract of land. When we brought Kingdom Ridge online, I don't know if many of you remember, but I know that I went to at least four or five neighborhood meetings, okay? We had, of course, the standard public hearing at Planning Commission, had it here at City Council, and that property was really zoned for 5,000-square-foot lots, according to the Blackman Study. Well, we ended up with 10 12s and 15s, with a landscape buffer all the way around. We were, as a developer, I was put in a position, instead of putting amenities in the subdivision, to get the prices that I needed to make it work, because frankly, this is business. And if I can't make money, then I don't need to do it. But anyway, we went from what the Blackman Study called it 5,000-square-foot lots to 10 12s and 15s. So there was a compromise there. On this particular piece of land, the topography is a significant barrier for single-family. It's just difficult to build on a slope where in a given 100-foot-deep lot, you're going to have 8, 10, 12-foot of contour difference. I mean, it's just difficult. We can remedy some of that with the multifamily, because we can pod the multifamily. Another thing that we've got to keep in mind as we look at this is the long-range vision that we have. And still, after all the negotiation or the ideas that are taken back and forth between the city and the professional engineers and myself and family as we discuss and work through these, is we still all live in the same community. We're still going to need schools, okay? We've got to work together. And I rely heavily on the professionalism through education for guidance. You know, I try to surround my people, as most of, all of us do, with people that have strong qualities in other areas, and that's what I try to do as I bring these properties to you. The, my family has been building in Rutherford County, Murphysboro, for 50 years. We've been developers for over 30 years. We have a track record, and I want to go to a little story here. When I was probably 17 or 18, and I was riding on the coattails of my dad, we went to the codes department, pulled a permit. We actually wrote on a legal piece of paper and showed the codes official what we wanted to build and pulled the permit. Things have changed. Things have really changed, and for the better, I might add. You know, there was a time when we really didn't have codes in Murphysboro, and I'm happy to say that we have them, because it really levels the playing field for builders and developers. This request was not, obviously, made overnight. Hours have been invested in the project. If we took the, let's say, 110 of the original acres that were there, you carve out five acres for roads, you carve out 25 for the school, you're left with, what, about 80 acres? So if we're using .9 or 1 per house, so you've got, and you could get three lots per acre on an RS10 zoning, so there are your 240 houses, 240 single-family, if this land were conducive to single-family. I really feel that it's not, because, mainly because of the contours. In 2004, when Kingdom was coming online, you know, we were really pushing the limit of the city limits. We were really pushing the limits. It has enveloped or developed into, I'm proud to have the community Kingdom Ridge. I'm proud to have, be a part of Victory Station. I was at a homeowners meeting last night till 8:30. We were discussing things and options, and what do they want to do, and how do they want to progress, you know, what's happening with the apartments that are being built there, where's Covenant Drive going? We went over the school a little bit. So I am in communication with the communities that I'm involved with. We were really waiting on the area to mature, and it continues to mature. I would respectfully request and humbly request that you approve this development as submitted for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else? Anyone else? Last chance. All right. I'll close the public hearing. At this time, we'll consider for passage on first reading and ordinance to rezonate area located along Veterans Parkway and Franklin Road, Highway 96 to Highway Commercial, CH District, Local Commercial, CL District, Residential Zero Lot Line, RZ District, and Residential Multifamily 16, RM 16 District.
I'll ask you a couple of questions.
Mr. McFarlane.
I've got.
Who would you like to ask?
Mr. Adelot.
Mr. Adelot. Thank you for being here, Mr. Adelot. Please assume your regular position.
Mr. Adelot, over the last several months, or we've heard a lot about this area and then also about the Blackman Land use study. When was the Blackman Land use study completed? Was it '99?
It was adopted right in the first of the year 2000.
Would it be something that we would look at on, something like the mayor talked about? Do you consider that plan to be outdated after it's 13, 13 years old?
I wouldn't really consider it outdated, but I believe if we're looking at a more comprehensive plan for the community, we're really going to be probably superseding it, taking it and updating it along with others and meshing them together a little bit better.
You know, I find myself, I've known Mr. Swanson and his family and even people who worked for him for a lot of years. And the thing I can tell you about Mr. Swanson is there are things that he does in this community and people he helps that you never know about, and that he never tells you that he's helping, but you hear people who will come up to you and just tell you, let me tell you what, what Mr. Swanson did for me. So, and that's when you tell the true character of someone, when they do things not for public gain. So that's why I have a tough, you know, not just with this proposal, I have a tough time disagreeing with, with Mr. Swanson or his representatives. But I look at this property, and when Mr. Gunther talks about balance in the Blackman Land use study with balance, I'm having a tough time looking at a 25-acre school campus. And although we do have single-family residences across the creek and on overall creek, that really is a dividing line. You can't get to those, that, that development, there's no bridge there. You know, we talked about that when we were looking at the school site. So with my calculations, we've got 62 acres that we're looking, that's around the school. That would be all what we would consider multifamily or RZ condominiums. So that's a maximum of 860 units, or what we're saying a more realistic of 660 units. Then that's not counting across the creek. We have another 23 acres, or Mr., the developer has another 23 acres at 360 units. So we have over 1,000 units that we could throw a rock at from the school of multifamily. And so I guess, I don't have a problem with the commercial, but if we're looking at the Blackman Land use study, I guess my question is, how is that balanced if we're saying balanced development in the area? And I don't mean to put you on the spot.
That's okay. The, and I think that the thing about land use plans and about the Blackman plan, in-plan, there's always some room for interpretation. There always will be. And that may be the guidance. The greatest, the greatest things about these type of plans is that the discussions that are generated when they're prepared and the creation of a vision. A couple of things that came out of the Blackman study that I do believe in, and we've seen it happening, and that is, we realized we were looking at a part of the city rather than a rural part of our county. And the Blackman Land use study was calibrated on a higher density than we would expect to see in rural areas. And that's reflected in what it defined as medium density, four to eight dual units per acre. The unincorporated area would have been maybe one unit per acre. The city, that's, would you expect to see about 2.5 dual units per acre in RS-15? That's what, that's about your gross density for RS-15. So we were looking at, for the, for the bigger part, for the single-family that would develop in the, inside the Blackman area, about four to eight dual units per acre. We identified some areas specifically for a higher density. And then that was buttressed with some policies about, that they would be placed at areas where they would be able to be serviced by infrastructure. Certainly, there was a recognition that we didn't want high densities of populations with streets that just couldn't or wouldn't or shouldn't have the traffic capacity to accommodate them. We knew that we didn't want to have high densities of population having to travel through low-density areas to get to their destinations, like shopping areas or major arterial streets, to be able to move. So some of these areas were moved to areas around the interchange. Some of them were moved to the areas around Madison Pike near the Fortress and Medical Center Parkway interchange. Some of them were over off this Veterans Parkway corridor. From a density standpoint, I don't think he's far off of what the plan called for. From a policy standpoint, I think he's generally close to it. Within the document, some of the additional policies call for a lot of reliance on design, good design. What, and, and I will assure you this, and I even noticed it in an email I saw today, the idea of interface development, where multifamily and commercial comes up against single-family type developments. How do you make that transition? Transitions, zonings, classifications, and densities? One of the things, when Mr. Swanson and his team sit down with me, right after we began talking about the school site, actually, what, actually, I'll even step back. He came to me to start talking about planning for this property before the school decided to locate there, before the city identified the need for the school site. I asked him to hold up once his property began to be a candidate for a school, with the idea that if the school is located on his property, the paradigm for his, for the design just dramatically changes. Because after the school is located, obviously, how the development around it would take place should be different. After the specific site was chosen, the architects decided which was the proper place to put the school, had the characteristics needed for the school. The engineers decided how the roads would get there, what kind of roads would need to be there. The city council decided upon some of the roads it wanted to see, with the second road out to the Veterans Parkway. Mr. Swanson and his team came back to see me to start planning in earnest to move forward with their land plan for this property so they could move forward with the zoning. The initial plan was to put single-family homes in a row right across from the school. And I actually asked them to back up from that. And one of the reasons I felt that that was something I wanted to back away from was, if they have a single row of houses fronting on that street that the city builds, it will be a very easy apple for Mr. Swanson to pick and build a series of home zones. But it would never be a neighborhood. It just never would be a neighborhood. It would always be a row of houses across from the school, with a row of driveways that would be impacted by the traffic that is occasioned by the school. It would always be a series of driveways that would be frictional to the activities that go on around the school. I actually urged him to look at something that would be a more campus-type, something that would have a controlled access and not have as many driveways onto that segment of the street. And I still feel that's important. And when he combined that with the slope on that side, and I'm talking about the southern of the two multifamily pods, when you combine that with the multifamily or the hill, you put, you put apartments on top of that hill, they'd be looking into the backyards of those homes. It would never be a good interface. It would be a group of houses that would be very lonely and would be very impacted by the other houses or the other homes higher up on the slope. So I actually encouraged him to look at something, and with the idea that there could be a very good design. And actually, Mr. Gunther, a landscape architect, I believe, who has a lot of talent, saw a similar, a similar vision as I did. The idea that the, a campus design for that pod in particular could create a much better dynamic for everybody, the schools, the city, the people who come to the school, the activities that go on at the school site. And I, I do believe that. My land design, I mean, my studio classes with Curry Peacock come back to me and tell me, that is a better approach than seeing a subdivision built on the slope. The other spot, I'm not as, I'm not as insistent upon in my terms of my evaluation. I think it has more flexibility. The, the, the big concern there is it's right up against the commercial. It's sandwiched between the school and the commercial site. So it, it has another, but a different interface situation. So I offer you a little bit of explanation beyond what you may have asked for, but the Blackman's policy and statements encourage good design and for long-term neighborhood design. Don't create a place that will never have a place to it. Create a place that is a place, a place that the neighbors will feel the neighborhood values that we want in our community.
That's really, when I, when I look at this, that's just the thing that pops out, pops out at me, that, you know, we have a 25-acre new school backing up to overall creek that, you know, we're going to have a, and the taxpayers will have a significant investment, 20-plus million dollars, in that, you know, we only get one chance to get this right. So that school is going to be there for 75 or 80 years. So I just think that we have some studying to do on if it's appropriate to surround it with high-density residential. And that's my, I have no doubt that, that Mr. Swanson and his team will do, in anything that they do, top quality. I mean, that's, they have a track record for that. I just don't, I just don't know that, you know, out of 108 acres that we have, we've got 36 of commercial and, excuse me, 98 acres, there's 36 of commercial and 62 of basically multifamily. So that, that concerns me.
Mayor, if I may, may I make a brief report on my multifamily study? I think you all may be interested in that. It's ongoing. Mr. Blomley is working on it. You can imagine this time of year, the schools have a little bit of different priorities than working on some of the studies. We're getting good response from the city schools personnel. Of course, a big part of the study is coming from the county. They have been unable to respond as rapidly as we had hoped. We hope to be able to finish our study, hopefully, if it progresses as we're hoping at this point, within three weeks.
One of the questions I have, and I went to the Power of Ten Summit in Nashville about two months ago. The planning director from Raleigh, North Carolina was there. There were probably 200 to 300 people there. And he asked everybody in the room, how many of you have ever rented a place to live? And of course, virtually everybody there raised their hand. And he said, all of us renters aren't bad. And it's interesting, I think, that we see a proliferation of apartments on almost a cyclical basis we have in the past, where they fill up the market and then they have to absorb, and then they fill up the market and they have to absorb. But apparently, from what this planner said, is demographically, the country is finding that they prefer mobility and not tying up fixed assets in living space. And when you create jobs and people come to see whether those jobs work out, they're going to rent initially, much more so than they are going to buy a fixed asset to find out if their job's going to work, if they're going to stay there. And of course, we all know we have a lot of folks associated with the university and with the new businesses that come here that want to rent. It's surprising to me that possibly, we didn't realize 13 years ago that there would be such a proliferation of renters or apartments. We just didn't expect that because we saw a kind of that every four-year, five-year cycle when all the apartments were absorbed. So, you know, in creating a neighborhood and creating connectivity and making it walkable and having the road network already in place, I mean, this, it does seem like it is quite an expansion, but it will be and occur over a period of time. And we do have a school site there, which I'm very pleased and proud of. So I don't know that there's any other comments there, but it just is, it's very difficult to understand what people want for tomorrow as we see amendments to our PRDs that we've put in the past, and people changing lifestyle has changed us from whoever considered that Murfreesboro would even have zero lot line housing with the proliferation of acreage that we have. I mean, that's, it's just something that changes with time. So it's a, it does look dynamic and it looks different. I'll, I'll agree.
And Mayor, I, let me say, I'm not against putting some multifamily around the school. I mean, I, you know, I, there's not any really on that side of overall creek, but I guess what my concern is, is it too aggressive for it all to be multifamily?
Well, you know, we have a couple out there by scales. There are two apartments right adjacent to scales. There are two right there on Fortress that really cannot, I'm sure the ownership would like to tell you, they look different, but I'm confused every time I go around Bucket Station there, that they kind of look alike. And then the other side of the road is pretty filled in, and so, you know.
I think I counted 11 from, from.
What's that, 11 apart?
Yeah, from, from Casey Lane back to Fortress. I may, I may have miscounted some. I just got on the old Google Maps and, or Google Earth, but I'm.
Mayor, since I wasn't by up here by Mr. McFarlane, I want to join just a second. Your observations about the planner from Raleigh, that's something that's very much in the literature from planners and the planning magazines, that the nature of multifamily is in fact changing. And one of the things that I think that, from my perspective, we're seeing a change in the way we, as a city, deal with multifamily. We expect more amenities from them. We, we expect it. We, we almost push the developers of these type of complexes to it. The renters that you're talking about expect a better management. In the past, they expected that multifamily was a different type of housing. Now they expect multifamily to be a secure place to live. They expect from a management, things that when I was in college, I might not have expected. It's, it's a different, it's a different environment, which is, which is, it's encouraging to me in some respects because I think that these type of places that are well-managed fit the community better. Something that gets lost in the discussion of multifamily, and then, Mr. McFarlane, I'm not trying to lobby you on changing your mind, that's not the purpose of my statement, but I want to put one thing in perspective. Multifamily in our community, actually, the multifamily dwellers are taxpayers, and they pay at a commercial rate. Although often the appraisals may look a little bit less, they make up for it in a commercial value. And then they also don't consume some of the things that some of our other residents do. We don't pick up their garbage. They, they get to pay for that, and we don't, we don't do it for them. And that gets lost in some of these discussions.
All right. Any other questions or comments regarding this rezoning? Mr. Smotherman?
I guess my concern back when we were talking about the school, and still, I guess, when I look at the presentation here, the density of the houses around it, we've still got that hard dividing line of overall creek. Is there any plan in the future of potentially having a bridge across to which would bring that neighborhood more into this school zone? Or are we going to just kind of leave that? Is there any plan at all in the future to have a bridge that connects this?
Well, that's something I sure think that Mr. Richardson, our transportation director, our city engineer, and myself and our city administration need to discuss. From a long-term planning perspective, it is a very desirable link. It's desirable for the benefits, for how the street system will function for the schools, but also for the bigger pictures of, for the east-west connectivity so that not, everybody has to drive up to our arterial streets. And I think that the Swanson family and the developers of Kingdom Ridge are interested in working with the city in that regard. The, the street layout. The, the street layout allows for that to be done. The unfortunate part of that is the cost. That we're, we're looking at a, well, somewhere upwards of a, of a half-million-dollar bridge. It's not going to be a cheap bridge to build. It's more than we would ever expect a developer to build in his subdivision. It may be something that we have to, to look at together, if that's something that we want. To some degree, that is something we may have to look to the council to, to help Mr. Lyons to, to decide what, what direction to go.
Will that be studied in our countywide major thoroughfare plan?
I believe that it will be.
Thank you.
And, and I agree with you that the, the makeup of high-density housing is not all bad people. And certainly, I don't want to give the impression that anybody's opposed to it because of the density of it. Because the, the economy has taken its toll on a lot of people. And I know a lot of people who live in high-density housing that would love to have an acre-and-a-half property with a big house on it. The, but, but that's not an option to them. So, so they do wind up in, in multi-housing. The, when you look at Northfield School, we've got apartments across the street from it, we've got apartments that run down the side of it. I really don't know that it's a huge problem with, with those apartments being next to that school. I mean, it doesn't seem that it has as many access roads going into the road because of the, you don't have the single driveways all the way across. So, so I think there are advantages to having high-density housing across from a school. And I, and I know the comment has been made about Blackman High School, which I know a little bit about. My son just graduated there, thank goodness. But the, but we were zoned seagull. And, and four years ago, there wasn't an overcrowding problem at Blackman High School. There was actually a open-door policy at Blackman High School as well as Oakland High School, and you could go to either one of those schools from anywhere in the city. The largest graduating class in the city this year came from Blackman High School, and that was because of that open-door policy, which opened up and allowed a freshman class of 750 students to come in four years ago. That graduating class should free up some room at Blackman High School because now that waiver policy is no longer in place that would allow people to come from all over the city to that school. So that, that should improve as far as the high school. But we're in a continuously growing city. We do have to have vision and look forward to accommodating what the future needs are. And certainly, I think Mr. Swanson has done a, a very good job of laying out, as, as well as working with you, Joseph, as far as laying out a area that looks to be functional. It makes sense to me to have the, the commercial where it is. I, I have a little bit of concern, as well as shame from his comments, with the size of the high-density area. But, but, but I'm not completely opposed to, to what he's trying to accomplish. And I don't think this is something that's going to be built out overnight either, so.
I'm kind of looking forward to an apartment on a hill.
There you go.
We don't have any hills.
But, you know, we, we did have the vision enough to have a school in place, and I think that's a good thing that we, with this development, that the school is, is already being looked forward to. And having said all of that, well, I'll let you all comment if you've got anything else to say.
Any other comments?
If there are no more comments, I move for passage.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion? If not, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
No.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
At this time pursuant to the provisions of TCA 6-56-206, and the Murfreesboro City Charter will conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed 2013-2014 City of Murfreesboro budget. Notice of said public hearing was published in the May 26, 2013 issue of the local newspaper. So anyone here wishing to speak for or against or about our proposed 2013-2014 City of Murfreesboro budget, please step to the microphone and give us your name and address. Welcome.
I'm Richard Baines. And I think I forgot why I'm here.
But you live?
I still live at Parkview Terrace here in Murfreesboro.
And the street address?
1319.
Thank you.
Parkview Terrace. One of your goals is engaging the public. Well, here I am.
Great. A recent graduate of our Citizen Government Academy, too. Thank you.
The Nogill Academy.
I, my intention tonight was to plead again for a rate reduction on our stormwater fees. But before I get to that, I would like to compliment the city staff on putting together the budget. I downloaded the whole thing. And it flowed pretty good until I got to stormwater, engineering, street department, and signs. Jim, Rob, I have to congratulate you. You get As in creative accounting. And Ms. Gels, I, I didn't intend to address your comments, but I will. I agree with you on your comment that was in the paper today about flat raises. I think I got that correct. You do not agree with giving across-the-board percentage increases. I've had a lot of experience with funding budgets for salaries and wages. I've dealt with just about every aspect of it. The good part about flat raises, they're easy to administer. You don't have a lot of debates. If you have a, a merit system, which I worked with, I had a combination for my exempt and non-exempt people where I had a pool of like 2% across the board and maybe a 1% merit pool. And you have to back that up with merit increases with evaluations. You can't just willy-nilly hand them out to your, your friends or whatnot because you get into all kinds of charges of discrimination or favoritism and whatnot. So it's not as easy as you think to change a system. I had it easy in, I had like 700, 900 people sometimes, but most of them were taken care by the union. That was a flat rate, so I didn't have to fool with that. That was all decided. But the downside of that is people don't have the incentive to work as hard because if Joe here is doing his job and he's doing it well, he's very productive, and Pete is doing not quite as good as Joe, he's not very productive, but they're getting the same wage, that, that creates a little bit of dissension. So it's not just that simple to apply an across-the-board increase. And I understand your concern. It's kind of a Robin Hood approach. Take it away from Rob and give it to somebody in the fire department. I think that's, I think that's what you kind of were alluding to. Anyway, that being said, I'll get to what I came here for, which is to plead for a reduction in our stormwater fees. I, and I'll refer back and forth here to some documents that I downloaded from the public record. There's a 7 million, almost a $7 million fund in stormwater. It's kind of been hinted that this was something that was planned for. But in looking through the documentation I have, which are the minutes from Water and Sewer Board and the current budget, it doesn't seem to hold true. One of the things I, I got confused on in looking through the budget, the, the stormwater budget, that's part of a proprietary entity, isn't it, Ms. Wright?
It's an enterprise fund.
An enterprise. It, okay, enterprise, I'm sorry. In other words, those funds, the income can't be commingled with the general fund.
That's correct.
The state would frown on that.
That's correct.
One of the things I noticed that you can't commingle the funds, but you can sure cross-charge from the general fund, you can cross-charge out of expenses, out of, for example, the engineering department to the stormwater fund.
That's true.
And that's not, that's, to me, that's about the same thing as commingling the funds. It's just a reverse of it.
You do have to have documentation for those charges.
Good. I'm glad to hear you say that. Where's the documentation for a $300,000 engineering cross-charge? Do we have who, every, every item, itemized every hour, or whatever, however you do it? How do we justify it? Because I couldn't find anything in, in any of the budgets.
Let me interject here a minute.
Excuse me?
It's a public hearing, and I want you to speak. I want you to ask all the questions you want to ask.
Well, I'm sorry.
And we'll get you all the answers we can get. But back and forth probably is not going to solve all our issues tonight.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Your Honor.
And I, I'm thrilled you're here. And, and Mr. Gore is here. We're going to talk about stormwater, I think, a little bit later, aren't we?
Yes, sir.
So you're, you're, you're.
Oh, okay.
See, I think they call that a segue. Your segue is excellent. So, so let's go on with your questions, and then we'll get you all the questions answered that we can.
Okay. I'll skip County 101.
Okay. That'd be good.
I noted that it's okay to mention this $300,000 engineering cross-charge.
Anything you want to talk about, that's fine.
$220,000 capital expenditure for a sweeper? That makes sense, so, to me. $120,000 a year to run it? That goes into stormwater. That comes out of stormwater. That's pretty creative. I suggested that five years ago and it never got implemented. I don't know why. But I guess a little attention's paid to public input. You might take a quick look at page 137, 140 in your budget. There's a comment, there's a comment there about, that says, "Strategy for lowering the current surplus of dollars in the stormwater fund." That language indicates to me that the surplus was unplanned and has become a potential lightning rod. And page 140, more costs are explained. The solution that is currently being promoted by the Water and Sewer Department is to participate in the cost of paving private greenfield development, parking lots, or brownfield development, which is public schools, for example, which would pay for the, this would pay for the excess cost of permeable pavers over asphalt, as an example. The proposal also suggests that the stormwater fund participate in the maintenance costs associated with the permeable pavers. That's on page four of the stormwater funding proposal. I can see using public funds in certain brownfield developments such as our schools or other public properties. But I'm certainly opposed to financing private development with public funds. The homeowners, as well as the businesses, are excluded in the greenfield proposal. No sharing of the cost of paving our driveway, even though we have, we, the ratepayers, are the source of the funding. I would ask that in light of what I presented, that the council review the stormwater budget and consider my proposal of a 25% reduction right now in stormwater fees. The idea that this was a well-planned fund, I don't know. I've got a problem with that. From the Water and Sewer Board minutes February 26th of this year, the accumulation, this is page seven, the accumulation of stormwater working capital has somewhat, been somewhat deliberate in order that any project qualifying for funding through the stormwater fund could be paid for with cash on hand. That's good. With the current level of accumulated reserve funds, staff is intending to more aggressively pursue those projects that qualify for stormwater funding. I, with 7 million, almost 7 million dollars there, I would guess that they sure are. And it doesn't sound like the language "more aggressively pursue" is language that indicates that there was already a plan in place that these funds were going to be used for. Now, from the engineering division, from the current budget, engineering, page 137, bottom paragraph, "More emphasis to develop a stormwater management program will be part of the strategy for lowering the current surplus of dollars." Now, you don't get a surplus. That means that you didn't have a plan, that there were dollars left over. Currently, about $300,000 of the engineering division personnel cost is funded by the stormwater user fee. An additional $120,000 from the stormwater fees will be used to fund the street sweeping function in the street division. My thing about lowering the, getting, using the $7 million, and this thing is growing exponentially, it's like, if your dog's getting fat, quit feeding him. That's why I'm asking that you really go back, review this budget, review this greenfield proposal, and, and think about us, the ratepayers. We're funding it. I'd like to see it right up front, not a year from now. I'd like to see it right up front that we would have, I recommended a 25% reduction in the stormwater fees across the board. And I submitted a pro forma that would support that. It would not break the, the stormwater budget. Also, part of this proposal is a long-term maintenance cost associated with the off-site portion of any extended BMP is anticipated to be integrated into a maintenance agreement with the development site as either a stormwater fee credit or subsidy, so there's a clear distinction that the surface treatment BMP is not the city's property, but rather is privately owned and maintained. Long-term maintenance costs, costs could be incorporated into basins qualifying for setup for a special assessment area. It's not the city's property, but we're willing to spend stormwater fees to subsidize the paving of a parking lot. And then, in addition to that, we're going to pay for the maintenance by reducing the fees. And what do I get as a homeowner? What do the businesses that already have paved parking lots get? Nothing. We don't get reduced fees. We don't even get, get an opportunity to get reduced fees. I guess with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the record.
We'll, we'll make your statement part of the record, and then we'll get you some answers. How about that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak for or against our budget or about any other items on our budget? Excuse me. Anyone else here wishing to speak at the public hearing regarding our city budget? Anyone at all? Last chance. All right. I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we will consider any other changes to the proposed City of Murfreesboro 2013-2014 budget. Mr. Lyons?
Yes, sir. On your dais, we've got an updated list of two categories of items that have come up during the budget review. The first is a category called Corrections. As we went through the budget, we shared with you a number of situations where there may have been a keying error, an item that had been omitted. We've gone over these. There did not appear to be any question about those, but we did have an updated list. So that would be one group that we would like to get some direction from you on. Secondly, Secondly, the section called Additional Considerations, I anticipated you might want to talk about those individually, but we would certainly be able to answer any questions that you would like at this time.
All right, let's look at the Corrections first. Are there any questions regarding those corrections that have been proposed?
Rob, those are all items that we actually discussed in detail Monday.
Yes, the one that may not have gotten discussion, it was in the written material, had to do with two promotions for administrative staff, one in police, one in fire and rescue. That was in a memorandum I had sent to you. That was a very traditional-type promotion. We had said it in the written text, but it didn't follow through in the math of the budget, and so that, it would be a correction that we would ask for your consideration. Neither of those two were on the, I had employee, the group of employees that we had talked about at some length.
All right. Any other questions regarding these corrections, as they are noted? Would you like to vote on those by themselves?
I think you could make a motion to amend the budget to accept all of the proposed corrections collectively.
Those corrections. Would there be such a motion forthcoming?
Amend the proposed budget?
Yes.
Some would.
Mr. Gilli, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Young, thank you. Any questions regarding the corrections before we vote on them? If not, please call a roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. All right, now you have the additional considerations, which have to do with building codes, planning, general administrative, outside agencies, and various departments. Mr. Washington?
Yes, for the public, I want to make sure, under planning, the consultant comprehensive plan, future land use, that was one you asked for, correct?
That's exactly right, yes. And that's a budgeted number, I'm not sure what, we'll go out, I'm sure, for a request or proposal, try to figure out what that might cost and what it might entail.
Okay.
So, we're looking at the purchasing agent now?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Adding the addition of a purchasing agent, which will go into the Finance Department, and work closely with legal.
So, we think we may be able to hire someone?
Possibly.
Now, I don't think this is going to happen, but that purchasing agent won't have anything to do with transportation, right?
Well, other than to support them when they need to purchase some of their supplies?
Mm-hmm, okay. I mean, Jack Hyatt, that bunch, Jack Hyatt and his bunch, Mr. Hyatt.
Fleet Service.
Fleet Service.
And Fleet Services, yes.
Okay.
All right, any other questions on additional considerations? And if there are none, is there a motion that we accept the additional considerations?
And that's got, make sure that everybody else, all the outside agencies that we discussed, is there any others that anyone else wants to?
Add or add to.
For that were brought up, I just want to make sure that any of the rest of us don't have any additional considerations, so that was while we're looking at this section before we vote.
And those have been added to what we're looking at here?
Right.
With the adjustments.
Yes, sir.
Have you got this yet?
Yeah.
I do want to abstain, I'm on the Dr. Martin Luther King void, and so I would like to abstain from voting.
From that particular item.
Just to make sure, Mayor, that my request and Mr. Smotherman's request are included in this.
They are. There are additional funds, actually, the soil conservation is a first time, and the additional monies for both Uncle Dave Martin Luther King Scholarship and the Child Advocacy Centers are in addition to what was budgeted.
Thank you, sir.
And Ms. Harris, also, the various departments, the positions, promotions, and market adjustments are on that list, and I know you have had some concerns about those, so, and I'm not just reminding you, those are lumped into that additional consideration item.
So, are we ready for discussion on that, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, as stated on Monday, I'm okay with the 3.5% across the board, but the additional funding for 13 additional positions, when everybody's getting 3.5% straight across the board, and additional employees are getting anywhere from 4% to 17.2%, I'm not okay with And Mr. Lyons, you gave us some additional information tonight, and with the insurance premiums going up 16%, and that's ranging from our employees, which the bulk of the employees are in the family plan, that plan for these employees are going up anywhere from $400 to $600, and I'm rounding off numbers now. I think it's like $583 or something, $400 to $583. And Mayor, you talked about, we are basing this on a study that we did eight years ago, and we're doing updates every year, looking at the updates, is that correct?
We do look at updated information, yes. And we also have, as you know, dropped the lowest salaries and...
Right, and added.
And added at the top, I'm probably, I'm guessing, but three times at least in the last eight years.
And just by the mere fact that we are looking at a study that was done eight years ago, and I know we are constantly, every year, looking at updating, well, you know, gas, eight years ago, was like $2 a gallon, and we're looking at now bread and milk in the grocery stores. So if we're looking at a study like that, this is even more off-base to me and unfair to our employees. And you referenced, in this memo, Mr. Lyons dated tonight, today, that we are updating, but yet and still, you have in your 2014 budget to do the study that was asked for. I just do not want to see us to be fair to our employees and to stick with our mission statement, better quality of life. If we're talking about in the mission statement to our employees, better quality of life, and we're taking the quality of life from the mass majority of our employees, that's just unfair.
Well, Ms. Harris, one thing I would like to point out in response to that, we have traditionally looked at other cities in Tennessee to see what they were doing relative to pay. In addition to the Burris and Thompson update on the pay plan to see what the market has done, we also look year after year to see what other Tennessee cities are doing. And in fiscal year 12, fiscal year 13, and fiscal year 14, which you have before you, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, has the highest amount of pay increases for its employees than any of the cities we surveyed, and we looked at 14 communities in Tennessee. This city council, this city administration has proposed, recommended, and approved the highest amount of pay raises for their workforce than any city in Tennessee. So I think we've been very active in trying to reward our employees, evidenced by the fact that we're leading the state in the amount of pay increases for our city staff.
I totally agree with that. Also, some of the cities that were in the report that we compared ourselves to, I don't think comes up to the same as we do as far as landmass services, like water and sewer, garbage pickup, and all that. We can't compare to some of the cities that we compared ourselves to. But getting to Murfreesboro and our employees is where I have the big problem. 3.5% across the board is fair across the board, and if people need additional money, and I think Mr. McFarland brought out about it, it's okay, and that was a good comparison, you have two people in the same department, one is really working, the other's not, I can see rewarding that if we go to this merit performance. It seems like, right now, based on what I read and what you're saying, we are doing it on performance right now, and we haven't even gone to that system yet. And another thing, were the department heads, if that's the case, were the department heads given the opportunity to look in their departments and give you names of people in their departments who they felt were exceeding?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I read that. Now, if that was that important to these department heads, why was that not put in writing to them, and why were they not given a deadline date to turn those, that information in, if it was that important?
They were.
So every department head was given that directive in writing?
I gave them a form to fill out for promotions, pay requests.
And a deadline.
Yes, ma'am, in February.
All the department heads?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not fair across the board. It's just not fair, Mr. Lyons.
Every department had an opportunity to submit to us requests for promotions and pay increases. The due date for that was February. We instituted a new form for that this year to help us get the data back in a consistent manner. So, yes, ma'am, every single department head had that opportunity.
And this study that was done, why were these particular positions pulled out and others not?
As I mentioned on Monday, we saw employees who accepted additional duties and additional responsibilities, and, you know, I know we did not name names last time, but individuals on that list assumed workload from an employee who retired and were not filling that person's position. The position's going away due to retirement. That workload is going to another individual. I believe with the additional duties and responsibilities, there ought to be extra compensation for it. We've got other individuals on that list who are now having functional responsibility for a major program for the city, and now supervising multiple employees. That additional responsibility ought to come with additional compensation. So, we looked at other positions, and is it compared to the Burris-Thompson information? It was not matched to the work that they actually do. We had a mismatch. We corrected the mismatch, and the mismatch resulted in a difference in pay bands. We felt if we're going to match our employees to peers in other communities, it shouldn't be a mismatch, it should be a correct match. That resulted in some individuals being on that list. So, we've got awesome employees, they all work hard, but the individuals on this list, we saw new responsibilities, additional workload, or a mismatch to the survey, and that caused me to make the recommendation that's before you this afternoon.
And I agree that we do have great employees, but, and we are doing this based on additional workloads they have and responsibilities. So, if that, and it was pointed out, that all of these increases are coming from one area, and if it's coming from one area, which is the top area in our city, then to me, it only makes sense, if they have that much more responsibility and more work, it should trickle down to all the departments having more work and more responsibility.
Well, let me draw maybe perhaps a distinction, Ms. Harris, that I think is important. In the situation where an employee was retiring, and we phased that job out, that work didn't go away, the work still needs to get done. And if the work needs to get done, and somebody's tackling that in addition to what they've already been doing, that's why I recommended the increase. To me, that seems appropriate, and it seems fair. And there's other positions, I put that in my cover memo to you a day or two ago. We had an administrative person in the Police Department that was handling additional duties. That was a normal, routine, matter-of-course-type promotion. I put that in the budget. Same thing in Fire and Rescue Department. We had a lead landscaper that we needed to have some more clear supervision. Those are the kind of promotions we do year after year after year, every year I've been with the city. That's in your budget in Parks and Recreation. But this group was slightly different, and I want to be very transparent with the city council. I want to show you exactly what it is that we're recommending, and I put it in plain view so that you all could take a look at it. I believe these individuals are taking on things they didn't used to have to do. It's not more of the same task, it's new responsibilities. And with new responsibilities, in my opinion, it ought to deserve additional compensation. This has happened in previous years in the city, under, you know, former city manager and former city councils. There's times where you look at employees and their pay and what they do, and there's something that's out of step. And so we want to call that to your attention and try to correct those situations so that our employees who are doing that additional work ought to be compensated for it.
And that's where I want to go too, Mr. Lyons, let's talk about that for a second. If you're saying that, you have a department head that's retiring in the Street Department, another department head is taking on more responsibility, more employees, why did you not deem it important for that particular supervisor who's taken on really a whole new department? Did you not deem it necessary to add that particular person to get more than 3.5%? Also, we have national recognition from our Fire Department, National, the Guard. Why didn't you deem it important to see that some people in the Fire Department get more than 3.5%? We have Chief Christman, who received, I think, something of the year from the Chamber, he was recognized, and it had to be from an outstanding job he was doing in the city. He didn't get that from what he was doing at home. Why didn't you see, deem it more important that Mr. Christman received more than 3.5%?
He received a pinnacle award from the Chamber.
So, if we're looking at, and all of these things, these accolades these people are getting, are making up what Murfreesboro is all about. These are taxpayer citizens that are getting excellent service from our city, but yet and still, you pulled out 13 people, all from one area, and said these people have more responsibility, and I just gave you an example. One department head has been asked to take on an entirely new department, more people, and when you keep hitting on the word responsibility, more responsibility, and that person was not recommended by you to get more than 3.5%. I don't understand it.
Well, let me speak to a couple of things that you just said. On the Street Director, when the Street Director retired, we analyzed to see what was going to be the best approach for the city in managing the street function. We looked at a whole range of options, everything from, you could privatize everything, or we could get the department bigger and not contract anything out. But as we began to look at the various alternatives, we felt like the most cost-effective way was really to go back to where we started, and that is to take the street function and have it under the overall direction of the city engineer. There's many technical decisions.
Okay, that's where I'm going, but why didn't you deem it important to give him more than 3.5%?
Yes, ma'am, I'm trying to answer your question, I hadn't finished yet. When we looked at the overall, how that was going to operate, we saw that a better way could happen, because the Street Director oftentimes had to work in close conjunction with the city engineer on technical decisions that would be implemented by the Street Department. Mr. Cromwell and I looked at that, and we felt that we could downshift that position a half step. Now, Mr. Templeton's job and responsibilities aren't going away, but they are going to be filled by a Street Superintendent that will report directly to Mr. Griffith. So, he's not having to do the work of Chris Griffith, City Engineer, and Rick Templeton, Street Director. There'll be a Street Superintendent who will be located down at the Street Department, who's going to handle a lot of the day-to-day operational decisions, assignment of work crews, handling of problems. So we are, we are having a staff person handle a lot of that. In addition to that, as Mr. Griffith talked to me about workload in the department, you'll recall, that's one of the new positions that we recommended this year. We recommended adding another engineer in training in the Engineering Department. So not only did we, you know, provide a Street Superintendent to manage a lot of the day-to-day decisions, we added a staff member to that department to help take some of the workload off Mr. Griffith when it came to construction projects, right-of-way acquisition, and for that matter, street issues. So we did give him additional resources. I felt, in my opinion, that that was an appropriate way to manage and be efficient and give Mr. Griffith the tools that he needed. He asked for that position, and I recommended that to you. When it comes to, you know, our employees, I want to go back to what I said a moment ago, 10 and 1/2% total pay increases over the last three budget years, that leads the state. We ought to be proud of that.
I'm very proud.
So, you know, I think from that standpoint, we have worked hard to address the pay and be competitive and stay moving forward. But you also mentioned some really outstanding employees, Chief Christman, Chief Gaines, and some others, and the awards that they're winning. We love when we get to bring folks to the podium right there. We love when we get to bring folks to the podium right there and talk about awards that we win. And that is exactly the reason why I'm recommending that we need move to a pay-for-performance-based system.
Well, why don't we do that before we give anybody over the 3.5%? If you agree that all these accolades for these people, and getting back to Mr. Griffith, you are going to put a buffer in between his responsibilities, but that person still is going to, still is going to have to answer to him. So he still is taking on additional responsibilities. So, you know, we can't praise, 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 and not raise, 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 raise equally. That's what I'm saying. This is just not fair. It is not fair. Are you comfortable going out here tomorrow, shaking a Solid Waste Department's hand, employee, say you're doing a great job, knowing that this person's getting 3.5% and his constituent in this city is getting 17.2%? Are you comfortable with that? Now, let me give you an example of what I saw. Well, what I, not, let me take it back. I received a call since Monday from a lady. She said she was 62 years old, she put her trash out late. She was taking her trash back in, and someone from Solid Waste passed by and stopped and said, "Ma'am, did we miss your trash?" She said, "No, I was late putting my trash out." He said, "Let me take your trash." He said, "Don't worry about it." He dumped her trash and said, "Let me take your can back to your backyard." He didn't have to do that. And I know that's going to come from this performance we're talking about, but as I asked Monday, and I still haven't gotten an answer, and I have come to the conclusion I'm not going to get an answer about that comprehensive study. Now, all of this adding to the study or revising the study, that's fine. But a comprehensive study, and that's what these, that's what these employees have been waiting on, that comprehensive study. That's what these department heads have been waiting on. And we said we're going to be fair and raise people based on the study. And that study was given certain positions. And, Mr. Lyons, this is just not fair. It's just not fair.
Well, Ms. Gels Harris, I think there's, there's two issues here that really need to be talked about and, and not compartmentalized, but I think to talk about it fairly and objectively. There's a difference between outstanding performance, the employee that took the woman's cart back to the house, you know what, that's what we expect in service excellence. That's what we have emphasized, because we heard it from you about customer service, and that's what I look at this team here to talk about customer service. And I love the fact that our employees are doing that. That shows they're going the extra mile and taking care of our residents. That's the kind of work that gets recognized in a pay-for-performance model.
When? When? We doing pay for, we doing pay right now? We doing pay right now, not performance. We doing pay.
The second part, the second part to what I mentioned is we've got outstanding performance, and we've got paying someone for the work that they're doing and the responsibilities. So when you're taking on the work of a retired employee, or a department's accepting functions that were handled by one department, there's retirements, and they say, "We'll take that workload." If they're taking new, new tasks, new decision-making responsibilities, more autonomy, that ought to get compensated. So outstanding performance and taking it to the can, taking it to the house, employees who are winning awards, you know what, I think our employees are going to run toward pay-for-performance because they're going to see an opportunity that they can do something perhaps more than 3 and 1/2%.
Why can't we do that now?
That's why I recommended the $70,000 in the HR budget to start that study.
No, we, the study should have been last year. We were, we asked for the study last year.
Ma'am, I, that's why I wanted to clarify. You made some statements at the meeting on Monday about what was expected, and I want to go back and look at the record. And that's why, you know, I gave you the memorandum today that talked about, we talked about the pay plan update on May 29th of last year. I gave a memo to the City Council that talked about us using Burris and Thompson to look at our peer cities, to look at the benchmark positions, to see what the market.
The benchmark positions, and why were these particular positions pulled out among everybody else?
Well, it's, you're mixing, mixing two different subjects. The Burris and Thompson study, that was the subject of my May 29th memo to you last year, and the, the funding that the City Council adopted in the budget last year was to do our biannual traditional update. I've said now for, for two budget years, moving toward pay-for-performance is where this organization, I think, needed to go. And when we look at the benchmark positions, Mr. Crumlin added this up for us today, there's 44 benchmark positions that he compares Murphysboro's pay ranges to the survey data. Those 44 positions represent 90% of the human beings that work for this city. That study overwhelmingly, because it includes positions that have lots of people in them, like police officer and firefighter, laborer, administrative assistants. That update that we did accounts for 90% of the individuals that work for Murphysboro. So while it's not every, while it's not every single city position, it gets 90% of the people who are employed by the city of Murphysboro. So that's.
So 90% of the people that are employed by Murphysboro boils down to 13 people, getting anywhere from 4% to 17.2%.
No, ma'am, that's not what I said.
But that's what it means. If you look at those benchmarks, 44, and you said it's 90% of the workforce, but yet and still, I have to do the math here, 13 positions getting anywhere from 4% to 17% increase, Mr. Lyons, nowhere can you convince me in no time and no place that that's fair? That is not fair, Mr. Lyons. That is flat-out not fair to the other employees. Now, as far as this customer service position, these employees not going to want to hear anybody coming out, talking to them about you doing a good job, or even try to motivate them if we pass this tonight to give these 13 people. Now, let me talk about some of the 13 people. Fabulous. Fabulous job. I mean, working weekends and stuff. Oh, I mean, at the point where exhausted working, deserved the increases. But when we're talking about fairness, and I was told, Ms. Harris, you know, you'll find out, you know, I know you'll find out as you go on in life that fair is not the same. But I'm here to tell you, when you dealing with a $117 million budget, fair better be the same. Yes, it better be the same. So I am saying, this is not fair to these employees to pick out. I just gave you an example, and then we bring people up here to the podium doing extra work. Where's their extra incentive? And you keep talking about we're going to pay for a performance basis, but you're giving these increases based on performance.
Given the increases because they've got additional responsibilities, handling tasks they didn't use to, and that's.
What about the, what about, okay, let's say the Street Department does, takes a strike for two days. Go on strike for two days. What would our city look like? What about the people getting up when it's snowing outside, 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning? So when you wake up to come to work, you're not slipping and sliding, you're putting that snow down. And, you know, firefighters and 1,200-degree, degree equipment. And you can just look at all the departments. It's not fair, Mr. Lyons. Now, I would like to see, again, 3.5% across the board. I am not against these other positions getting increases, because I know a couple of them, they are underpaid with this. But 3.5% across the board right now, until you go for your pay-for-performance study or whatever, that's what I'm proposing.
Thank you. Any other comments regarding these additional considerations?
Well, I'd like to make a motion since we, you're going to move on, Mayor, that we do that, unless somebody else has a comment.
That we do?
3.5% across the board until we do this comprehensive.
Only that. All right. Is there a second?
Well, no, Mr., I think Mr. Smollett was getting ready to comment. I'm sorry, Mr. Smollett.
Well, why don't we have a second first, and then we'll discuss it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it just so we can vote on it.
Thank you.
Discussion on the motion. The motion is 3.5% only, and that would take away, I'm assuming you're talking about taking away this $40,537. Is that correct?
No, you said that separate is, the water is a real, and they are separate because they are self-sufficient, is that correct?
The water and sewer is not included in this.
Right.
This is just.
Yes, those.
General fund.
Yes, sir.
So that's taken out. This $40,537, that's all yours.
3.5% across the board for everybody.
All right. And we have a second. Is that correct, Mr. Smollett?
All right. Now, discussion.
Mayor, may I suggest a clarification? Ms. Gels Harris, there are some, as you saw in the corrections, there's some things that are promotions and adjustments. And that's why I think the issue to which you took objection is reflected as additional consideration, the various departments, the $40,000. Because if you just say 3.5% across the board until we have the study, there'll be confusion in terms of some of the promotions that are budgeted. I, I think what you're objecting to will be better achieved with, with clarification by, by the item that the mayor identified.
So she's just wanting to delete the various department position promotions and marketing adjustments to the total of $40,537, which is listed under additional considerations.
That's what I think she intends, because as expressed, it would have an unintended, I believe, consequence of adversely affecting some of the promotions that would be more than 3.5%. And I don't think that's what you wanted to do.
Okay, well, the promotions, based on the study?
No, I'm talking about the normal promotions, so to speak, that are in the budget already. You're talking about the 13 people in the general fund that are reflected in the $40,537. That, that was what you spoke to. So I think that that's what your motion should address.
What she's asking you to do is allow all the other promotions which have been placed into the budget, but these are the ones specifically that you have objected to.
But I want to hear the comments of the council members.
Right. But, but she's just asking you to clarify the motion first.
Right.
And that motion, then, if, if.
And, and I will second that motion. But, but, but my comment on that motion would be, I don't, I agree with Madeline and Mr. Baines that, that the percentage system is flawed in the sense that when we go and we look at an employee who makes $100,000 versus an employee who makes $50,000. If you make $100,000, you're getting $3,500 raise. I'm not sure that that's fair to the $50,000 employee in the sense that when he goes to the grocery store, he still pays the same price as the person for the $100,000. So I'm not sure. I, I've just got a problem with percentage raises across the board, because it's basically the rich getting richer and the poor getting poorer, and the, and the gap gets wider every time you do a percentage raise. Although I seconded the motion, I somewhat disagree with the, the idea that these positions are based on basically Rob picking out a few department heads and saying, "These are the ones I want to give raise." I, I've talked with several of the, the people on the list, and, and my interpretation is their job descriptions have changed and their responsibilities have changed. And therefore, although we're not calling these promotions, we're giving them raises. And technically, the job description's not changing, and maybe it shouldn't, but they do deserve more money because of the increased responsibility and the job description basically changing. So, so having said that, that's kind of the part that's going to be confusing about me seconding the motion and probably voting differently.
I have a question, Mayor.
Mr. McFarlane.
So, Mr. Lyons, I feel like you're being the good soldier and you're in the athletic team, or athletic arena, taking one for the team. But were some of these recommendations from department heads to you?
Yes, sir.
So these are not where you just picked these 13 out. You had team members who said, "I want to recognize this individual," and you put that in, you agreed and put that in the budget.
Yes, sir.
I, I think that's the thing that I, I wanted to make a point. And I'm, I'm not saying this to pass city administrators, but since I have dealt with Mr. Lyons, one of my criticisms that I put on the city manager evaluation was that you take too much, too many recommendations from the team, and sometimes you just need to make a decision. So, and I, I put that in my, my written evaluation. So I don't think that Mr. Lyons, in, in some of these positions, are ones that he's just pulled out. I think it's ones that you've gone through the process, process, and they've been recommended to you. Is that fair?
Yes, sir.
I, I know one position where we have an individual that works in another department that someone retired, and this is an administrative staff or secretarial staff, I don't say secretarial, but administrative position, and we didn't fill that position, but we gave the additional work to her. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And the difference between that salary and the amount of the increase is certainly in the city's favor.
So I think that's something that we have to, to look at, which I, I think that, I think we want to be fair. But at the same time, I, I go back to that same situation I gave on Monday regarding my dad, that would work in corporate America, they would fire this person and say, "What, guess, guess what, Mr. McFarlane, you get, you get a promotion and no pay raise, but you get to get all this other responsibility where this person left." So it sounds like in some of these situations, we may have been paying someone, I'm going to throw out a number, $50,000 that would have retired. So that $50,000 salary went off the books, that we're not paying that individual anymore, and you may be giving this other individual a $4,000 increase. So in the taxpayer mind, we have saved $46,000 by not filling a, a position, but giving someone a $4,000 price bump.
Mr. Kelly?
I just want to say, I, I think Ms. Harris makes some very, very valid points. But I think overall, Mr. Smollett and Shane, I think both of y'all summarized pretty well where we're at and what's got us here and the general synopsis of things. I don't think there's anybody on that list that's not deserving of the pay increase that's being recommended. But at the same time, I think, and we talked the other day about the timeline, Rob, for the, the new study coming out, and I realize there's a difference in timeline of getting it finished versus implementation. But I think if we go along with this proposal, the one thing I would like to say is, is that with that study, I want it at least to be able to see on paper within a year, I'm not saying implementation, but where the, the rest of the employees in the city can see on paper what that study is showing and forecasting, because there have to be other employees amongst the almost 800 that we have, other than 13 when that study is done, that are going to be in the same situation, I truly believe that these 13 are. Now, the fact that we don't know, have those identified yet is not a justification for not remedying the situation that we are faced with. But remedying the 13, I think, is the onus for speeding up that study to get to the merit base as quickly as we possibly can for the rest of, of the team.
Let me, let me mention for a minute here, and I've got somebody I want to be fair to. We have a Boy Scout working on an Eagle merit badge, I mean, an Eagle Scout rank. And I didn't see him earlier, he's not in uniform, so I'm going to ask our city TV cameras, please, to turn on the right rear of the.
He's been waiting on that.
There you go. And, and, and we need to give Ellis Dotson a round of applause. Ellis is with Troop 442 of Church of Latter Day Saints, and we're thrilled you're here. And I know you're enjoying this discussion, and you're taking notes, because when you get your Eagle merit badge, you'll help us make a decision. When you grow up and get to be a voter, maybe one day run for city council or be a mayor. So we certainly appreciate you being here, and I'm sorry it takes so long to identify and recognize you. We're glad you're here. Thank you. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, is there, is there something that we can do to allow him to leave so he doesn't stay?
You're, you're free to go. You may leave.
I think he's enjoying it.
He may just be loosening up his arm, getting ready to for that mayor run.
All right. Mr. Young, did you have a comment?
I wanted to say, you know, we're going to get through this tonight, and the sun's going to come up in the morning. But what I want to do is I want to look to the future. I want the best pay study, pay plan that we can possibly come up with. I want it turned upside down, inside out, blown up, and put back together. And I want to address these issues we've talked about tonight. And I'm charging you with that, Mr. Lyons, because there's a lot of inequities, and life's not fair as a whole. But we have a responsibility to take care of our employees, and I think we do. But my comments are we need to look to the future, and let's get this pay study right. Let's look at all the departments, the police, the fire, the solid waste, all our department heads, and let's make a plan so next year, or in, and I do, don't want to drag this out for two years. we can say it's working, it's performance incentive, it's more fair than what we've got now.
Yes, sir. I've already scheduled a meeting next week with our staff to start the process to select a consultant. We want to, you know, that consultant selection will be made by the city council. I've already talked to our team. We want to provide you with at least quarterly updates about the process and the progress on that study. This project will include significant outreach input and communication with our city staff. And at the end of the day, in implementation, we're going to have training and more communication. So we are, we heard, you know, the council's desire. It's why it's in the budget that we proposed to you, and yes, sir, we will go as fast as we can.
We have these additional considerations before us. I think everybody, the vice mayor and the mayor, have spoken. And if you don't mind, I would like to go ahead and perhaps vote on this motion, which is to adopt all of these additional considerations except these various departments, which is forty thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And also, I think regardless, Ms. Harris wants to abstain on the Martin Luther King scholarship, so...
I have a comment, Mayor.
Sure. Ms. Harris.
After hearing the discussion from everybody, the promotion people, I don't think should have been lumped into this group. If someone is deserving of a promotion. But I find it hard to believe that no department head had anybody in their department they wanted promoted. And you said no department head said nobody in their department deserved a promotion?
No, ma'am. I think I outlined several of the promotions already. There was police, fire, parks and recreation. Those were included in my proposed budget. Yes, yes, ma'am.
So all of them are listed?
Those were the ones that were very typical and routine. The group that I pulled out separate was because I want to be very transparent and show you that we saw some folks taking on some additional responsibilities, and since...
But are all of these people taking on, if that's the case, it's not fair what I'm saying, but are all of these people taking on additional responsibility?
Or there was a mismatch in pay and the internal equity issue.
All these people are...
Please clarify, because you're saying all these people. I want to make sure I'm clearly understanding.
The thirteen people are taking on more responsibilities?
Or there was a mismatch based on their job description to the survey data, or there was the internal pay inequities. That was why we categorized it the way we did.
I'd like to call for a question and vote. There's a call for the question, which would be to vote on all these additional considerations and to not include the forty thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars of positions, promotions, and market adjustments only. The other things, outside agency requests, the general administrative, which would add a purchasing agent, a consultant for a comprehensive plan, and a building and code software would all be included. So would you please call? Everybody clear on the motion?
No. We've taken out the thirteen people.
Right, we've taken that out.
Our motion is not to include that.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Give their promotions, and I need to see, I need to do some investigation and some study on these promotions. I need to see what these people are doing additional.
Well, we've got, call for the question, so we're going to vote on this particular, which is your motion.
Right.
All right, we're going to vote on it now, and it's the second, and we're going to see where we want to go there. Ms. Wright, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Kelly?
No.
Ms. Gels Harris? Mr. McFarland?
No.
Mr. Smotherman?
No.
Vice Mayor Washington?
No.
Mr. Young?
No.
Mayor Bragg?
No. All right. Is there a motion to adopt the additional consideration, so we can discuss that?
Let me, can I make a comment?
Please, Vice Mayor.
I wasn't going to say anything. Mr. Baines, I appreciate that. You know, I used to work at Sam's Night when you were out there, and I didn't know y'all were merit-based because all we got was the same thing for everybody. I worked with people that were slow, lazy, and I worked with some that got on with it. You know what I'm talking about, and we all got the same thing. So when I went to go to electricity, went to merit-based, I was in management, been doing it for thirty-one, thirty-one years. When I became the district manager in 2000, I was started at the bottom of the pay scale for managers. Had three offices, a hundred employees, a bunch of contractors. And three years, Mr. James Otis Baker came to me and said, "Ron, you proved your worth. I move you up with the rest of them. This particular practice is management 101." It is. It just is. Now, I agree that we need to have a real good study because if you're going to merit-based, performance-based pay, that's a lot more work, a lot more responsibilities, and I hope that the city employees understand that is a major shift from the culture that you're used to today.
We'll put it on the department heads to make.
You do, and then you train. I mean, it's not that simple to change that culture. And I had a foreman one time tell one of my linemen, "What you in the hurry for? You're getting the same money I'm getting. We'll get this job done whenever we get it done." That, but when you have performance-based, you really need to bump up the incentive to give the employees something to work towards. And it should be, and I told Rob, it should be above that three and a half percent. So I don't know how it's going to come out, but that's all I've ever known. And our craft employees, they are union and negotiate their raises. We're in negotiations right now. They've gotten three percent for the last six years. And so have I. It gets zero to three. That's it.
So is there a motion on our additional considerations as they've been presented?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Washington, is there any comments or questions regarding that motion? If not, please call a roll. Oh, excuse me, Ms. Harris.
Okay. Is it okay for me to request, since we're saying these are promotions, I would like to see a copy of the study done. I would like to see a copy of all these job descriptions that we're giving this, that we are talking about giving 3.5 percent. And I'd like to make sure all of these department heads have looked around and made sure that nobody in their department else needs to be promoted. That's what I want to see. I want to see this.
That'll be included in next year's study that we, Mr. Young, has requested
Yeah, but I'm talking about...
and we all agree that we need.
Yeah, we need that, but I'm talking about for this year because I want to see, from the study that he's already done, I want to see a list of all these positions. I want to see a list of their job descriptions, and I want to see from the study what the study is saying that these people need the promotion on. I mean, I just want to read this and compare.
Why don't you meet privately with Mr. Lyons and do that?
Okay. So until I see that, I mean, that's why I'm saying I can't vote on this until I see if this is correct.
All right, so you're not going to vote on this?
Because based on Monday, this is not the same thing we're saying Monday that we're saying tonight. We flipped this. We're not saying...
Regardless, we're going to vote on it right now. We have a...
I want to make sure the council realizes this is not the information that was presented to us Monday. We flipped the script here. That's why I want to see. It's different for Monday.
How would you say that it's different?
No study was given to us, none, which was requested last year. Even if it's a partial study, Mayor, it still wasn't given. And if these are promotions, I'm for the promotions. I am for the promotions. But I want to see what the study says. I want to see these job descriptions and what these people are doing for this. And that was not brought out Monday. I want to see that.
So regardless of that, why don't you meet with Mr. Lyons, and you discuss that with him, and we're going to vote on this motion on the additional considerations as they've been presented. We have a motion in second. Please call a roll.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
I'm staying.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Thank you. Now, on the back, second page there, we have the airport fund and some additions to the community development fund. Are there any questions regarding those? I guess, would they be called additional budget considerations? If there are no questions, is there a motion that we include those in the current budget?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion in second, Mr. McFarland, Mr. Young, the airport fund, and the community development fund. Please call a roll.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris? Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Now, would now be an appropriate time to talk about Mr. Young, I mean, Mr. Lyons? Mr. Young's salary increase, you want to talk about that?
I would like to talk about my salary increase.
That's between him and his wife. That's it.
But my wife would get it, so we'll just pass.
I would throw out, for the purpose of just discussion, that we raise Mr. Lyons' salary 3.5 percent, which would be a total change. Salary would be five thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars and four cents. Social Security Medicare would be four hundred and one dollars and fifty-five cents. Retirement contribution would be six hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirteen cents additional to a total change of the budget of six thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-two cents. And I recommend that to you just as a starting point regarding Mr. Lyons' salary. That would be an additional 3.5 percent.
And we'll satisfy it with... I'm just going to let the rich get rich and poor just get poor.
Move for approval.
All right, we have a motion in second, a motion by Mr. Young and a second by Vice Mayor. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
I'm staying until I see the report.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution to provide other post-employment benefits for retirees for the fiscal year 2013, 2014.
Excuse me, Mayor. I think we need a motion on the budget in its entirety with all of these changes. That's what we need to do next.
That's the next...
I agree.
We've been, we've been making changes. We need a comprehensive.
Time all up.
All right, so this resolution on the post, that wouldn't be included in the budget?
No.
All right. Is there a motion? We adopt the budget as it has been changed? Before we do that, at what...
Mr. McFarland? Well, where you had it. The budget's really the... Mr. Baines had some questions that I think during the public hearing. We're going to talk about recommendations of the, of changing the financial policy, but if we approve the budget as is, then that means we're approving the water and sewer budget as well.
No, sir.
No, sir.
There will be a separate resolution on the stormwater fund coming to you prior to third reading on the appropriations ordinance, and it's really...
I just want to make sure that, you know, we get...
We're on the same train, and that was the same question I was asking.
That we get Mr. Baines's questions and...
All right, so you have these additional budget considerations that you have approved individually, and now we need to add them to the budget as a group and pass the budget. Is that correct?
You'd be just, you'd really be passing the budget when you passed the appropriations ordinance, which was item D.
All right.
Okay? So I just thought, since there have been so many changes, you might want to be sure you were clear about the budget in its entirety. If you want to talk about item C first, that would also be fine.
All right, thank you. Council members, which would you prefer to do?
If I should cancel, I move for adoption of the appropriations ordinance.
No, it's got to be the budget.
I thought that's what you just said that needs to be done next.
I was, I was saying the official final approval of the general fund budget is when you pass the appropriations ordinance, which is item D. It reflects in the appropriation ordinance the fact that you would have adopted item C, which is paying for retiree health benefits.
Well, I thought that's what you wanted to discuss.
The mayor was right. Let's do it. The mayor wanted to do it, it's fine.
Would you say that one more time?
The mayor was right. The mayor was right.
Hey, do you think they have that, they've got that recording back there, don't they?
Carry on, ma'am.
All right, item C, consider for adoption a resolution to provide other post-employment benefits for retirees for fiscal year 2013, 2014. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris? Mr. McFarland? Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. And now you have before you the City of Murfreesboro's 2013, 2014 budget with the additional budget considerations we have passed individually as to the general fund, as to additional considerations, as to the airport fund, as community development. So having that, then I would ask you to pass on first reading and ordinance the appropriations ordinance. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
I'm staying until I do further research.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington? Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, you now can consider for passage on first reading and ordinance the tax rate ordinance, which would set the property tax rate at its certified rate, which is no change from last year's rate. So I ask you to pass on first reading this ordinance, the tax rate ordinance. Is there a motion? I would love to pass that one, so I'll make the motion. Thank you. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Human Resource Director with regards to stop-loss renewal for Swiss Re.
Good evening, Mayor Bragg, members of city council, department heads, city staff, special guests, those who stayed this late. I'll be brief, bold, and be gone as quick as I can. Stop-loss reinsurance is an insurance policy that is purchased annually by the city for the purpose of providing protection to the city from financial exposure that's associated with health insurance claims, excuse me, of a large dollar amount. Typically, those claimants incur costs to the plan of over sixty thousand dollars. Last year at this time, there were eleven such claimants. This year, unfortunately, there are fifteen such claimants that participate in the plan. Our current premium for this coverage is seven hundred eleven thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. Of course, that particular premium expires on June 30. Included in your packet in your communication is a letter from the city's benefits consultant, Ms. Lisa Stam, indicating that all of the information she reviewed fit the city's bid process. She indicates, of course, in her letter, that Swiss Re is the most competitive bid as outlined by the city's specifications on the April 8, 2013 invitation to bid. Now, you'll note in your packet that Ms. Stam outlined several options. I apologize for the size of the font in the spreadsheet that was provided, but you will note that there is a bid by Swiss Re, who again is the current city's carrier for this coverage of an option called an aggregating specific option. And this particular option is a hundred fifty thousand dollar option. It is the most competitive option and is the one that Ms. Stam recommended to the city, and that it represents a premium decrease of approximately 11 percent over last year. And based on the other bids that were received, it represents a break-even at worst scenario to the city when compared with the other options. And that it also provides the city with an opportunity to potentially save one hundred fifty thousand dollars in premium. The premium associated with this option and the one that is recommended is six hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars, or seventy-nine thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars less than the current premium that the city pays for this coverage. I would ask that you provide your approval of the bid and recommended alternatives for renewal of the stop-loss contract, including the authorization and execution of the contract by the mayor when received by Swiss Re. Thank you. I'm happy to answer questions that you may have.
Questions for Mr. Godwin. Any questions?
If not, Mayor, I may reapprove the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Second.
Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris? Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Water and Sewer Board to adopt the City of Murfreesboro Stormwater Fund Financial Management Policies. And due to the lateness of the hour, is anybody interested in putting this off till a time more appropriate that we get to... At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Water and Sewer Board to adopt the City of Murfreesboro Stormwater Fund financial management policies. And due to the lateness of the hour, is anybody interested in putting this off till at the time more appropriate that we get to perhaps study a little bit more in depth? Or would you like to hear the presentation and defer? Or would you like to go ahead as if we were going to study it all tonight? I just give you that option.
Mayor, I would like to entertain the idea with... I agree with everything Mr. Baines said when he was up speaking, and I think the 25% reduction in the stormwater fee would be the proper thing to do. If that were... Is that something that you would need to study before we came up with the next budget? Or...
I would prefer that we have some type of workshop and look at what...
That's the direction I'm thinking.
And I'm sorry for the lateness of the hour, and I do want to hear your presentation, but I do think that possibly we need to spend a little more time on it, even though we have spent time on it in the past.
There's a lot of things swirling in my mind right now, but I do... I think March 21st, when we had our special... You really probably won't see anything much different than what you saw at the special workshop with the... Our special meeting with... Joint meeting with the Water and Sewer Board, which showed a five-year pro forma on operational annual expenses and excess funds that are going towards a working capital reserve account and a five-year capital improvements plan. It's a five-year horizon that nothing is pushing those... That CIP for a five-year horizon. That same CIP could get pushed out over a 10-year horizon. The financial policies try to set goalposts on what we would see as a minimum working capital reserve versus a maximum working capital reserve. If that is not to the council's satisfaction, if they would like to see a tweaking of the pro forma, that would be... You know, 25% reduction in the fee could probably be done if we wanted to put less excess funds into the working capital reserve account. I mean, there's lots of ways to handle this.
Mayor, what I might suggest, because I know we've been at this a while, and what we've been able to accomplish with stormwater certainly is important. We know you get a lot of drainage complaints, and we also know we want to be fair to the ratepayers. So, perhaps what we could do is just withdraw this item tonight and defer it, set it up for a council meeting in a week or two. Maybe when we... The agenda's a little bit lighter. That'll give you a chance to look at it, maybe ask Mr. Gore some questions. We can do some analysis and then put this back on the agenda where we got fresh legs and can talk about it then.
You're not kidding. I'm just getting warmed up. There we go. I would like to make one note that we're trying to be very transparent and candid in how we're handling the stormwater funds and thus the special meetings. The stormwater fee is a user fee, and if there's a service that complies with the state comptroller for the stormwater fee, there's nothing underhanded or shady going on. And there's no really...
No, there's not.
Nothing too creative going on. It's pretty straightforward stuff, and Mr. Baines knows that my door is open at all times. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we defer this to the next council meeting or the next council meeting. But I also would like to include in that motion that we see a pro forma adjusted with a 25% decrease, so that way we could have figures in front of us that we can actually look at.
And, Mr. Far... I would second your motion if, rather than saying specifically the next council meeting at a timeframe that's applicable. After the next... What the Water and Sewer Board made is a time that the city manager and the director of water and sewer, it's going to be appropriate to bring it back to us, as opposed to giving them a week or two. It's one of the seven.
I'll amend my motion to take any date, specific time, but that it just comes back with a recommendation, or not a recommendation, but information that we can look at with a 25% decrease.
And let me make one comment, and I don't disagree with anything that's been said. When that fee was set, number one, we had no funds to spend on stormwater, and this city faced what we knew was an unfunded mandate. So, for the benefit of those who serve on this council and our ratepayers too, we... The city undertook to pay lots of bills to federally comply with the Stormwater Act and MPDES. And that's why this rate was set, was number one, to get paid back and to indemnize for any future expense we did not know whether we would have or not. So, it may be appropriate, it may not be, but that... The reason it was set was to pay the city back and then to prepare for whatever came in the future, which we had no idea.
And the fact that we had no experience, Mayor, and the unfunded mandate that you mentioned, that there was... This number was kind of ambiguous anyways that we presented. And seeing that account has continually grown, I think Mr. McFarland's exactly right in the sense that it's time to review that and see if we can't come up with something that would pass history and experience now that we couldn't come up with a better rate.
And plus, some of our existing areas have drainage issues. I mean, just haven't filled in drainage systems from years gone by.
I think it's safe to say, though, that, you know, this fee's based upon impervious surface that's in our city, and the majority of this fee is paid by commercial business owners.
Right. The university pays, the city pays, we all pay.
Yes, correct.
Based on how big our roofs are, how big our driveways and sidewalks are. With that, I'll ask for a vote. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. I apologize to you, Mr. Gore, but I want to make sure that we had plenty of time and plenty of information and plenty of comment.
No need to apologize. Very good.
Thank you.
Serve at the will of the council. Thank you.
At least for another week. All right. We'd like, at this point, to hear from the city manager with regards to Stone River Greenway Phase Four.
Mayor, as you know, the city's effort to expand and extend the greenway from Old Fort Park to Barfield Crescent Park has been going on since 1999. We've had quite a long process to construct the trail, and we've actually made some progress and got it up to Barfield Road right now. But staff certainly heard from the council last month on some greenway issues, and there is a court proceeding coming up June 14. I'd like to ask you all that staff be allowed to defer that at least 60 days so that we can look to some alternative courses of action and some different options that we think can be satisfactory to everybody. So, we would ask, in this case, for your... Our ability to defer that date for at least 60 days while we work on options.
Is questions on Mr. Lyons regarding this recommendation?
I move that we accept his recommendation.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call a roll.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?[1638.21]